Thank you for coming this evening and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Sue, would you do the roll call, please? Here?
Here. Here. Present. Here. Here.
Here. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to address the council? Yes, sir.
My name is John Everett. I live at 2 Everett Lane. And I am going to sit down. Anyway, I was here at the last meeting. And I wanted to know how the zoning got changed on Everett Lane. And I was advised by Mary Ann, okay, that this board doesn't have the power to change that. Because I was trying to get it revoked. However, okay, I did ask that you, the board members, check out how this happened. Now, I did contact an attorney. The attorney told me that it is possible, except it's about $500 an hour for an attorney to change this. Okay. She recommended two, one in Hartford, the other one on Main Street in Thomasville. Well, obviously, the price is prohibitive because there's no fee. She had no idea of what the cost would be. So I did ask this board to check on how this happened. And in talking to the zoning board, nobody contacted them at all. So you asked that the public get involved. Now, I'm not going into great detail, but, okay, Franklin Pilasey's certified letter of application said, okay, application for Franklin Pilasey for the amendment to Watertown zoning map from R 30 to R 12 5 Resident District. That's it. Not one person that received that letter kept it. They threw it away because it meant nothing. So I'm here as a representative for the townspeople. If you get a letter, okay, and I don't care if it's from Santa Claus, you better check it out if it's certified. Because what happened here should have never happened to anybody in this town. And especially not the Evarts. The Evarts have donated and dedicated a lot of time. We've been here 100 years. And because of an individual that wants to change the zoning for capital gain, okay, for himself, he took it upon himself, and this is Franklin Pilasey that did it, okay? He took it upon himself to put in an application that basically read, okay, four Everett Lane, three Everett Lane, two Everett Lane, one Everett Lane, 558, 542. Did not include Everett Lane, which is the east side boundary of that property. So consequently, four did not get a certification. Everett Lane did not. That's my wife and I. Okay. And as you go on in this, okay, you keep checking. Now, it says, "Application Franklin Pilasey for Amendment to Watertown Zoning Adjusted Boundary, Davis Street and Everett Lane." Where'd that come from? Wasn't on the letter. Okay, so that wasn't there. Then you continue on. The next one, okay, has the date that it's effective, the 25th. The next one says, okay, zoning change. Every page is a change. I'm going to leave this over there for you to look at because I am in court. I'm here for the people of the town of Watertown because this should not happen to anybody. It was a spot zone change, and it was done, in my opinion, illegally. Franklin Pilasey sent it out, but that is so vague that not one member of this board would take that serious. Anyway, that's the end of the story. And I'll be here. Because as Patrick Swigie said, you picked the wrong guy. Can I leave this with you?
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Sure.
Well, Michael, 95, Woodbine Avenue. And I've got an easy problem that you can fix. That was a hard problem. Item number four, public comment. Comment to me means a one-way street, not a two-way street. I was always a fan of public participation, meaning we could talk and get something across. Is this meant to be a one-way conversation? Or should it be public participation?
It is one way. It's public comments. We want to hear from you. We will not engage in a discussion.
Well, you just did.
No, I'm answering your question, and that's it.
Well, that's a two-way communication. That's participation. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to talk to the council?
Hi. My name is Glenn Clyer. I live at 100 Joshua Town Road in Watertown. And I'd like to talk to you for a minute about the noise problems we're encountering with the Sunset Grill. I don't know if you're aware, but the Sunset Grill has been running some outdoor concerts all summer. And they've been very loud. And we've tried our best to politely ask that, you know, they turn their noise down. We've not gotten any favorable response out of it. I've contacted them by phone, email, text, and very politely asked. And all they do is just turn the sound down. We live just about a mile away. I can hear every lyric, every guitar lick, every drum beat. I mean, it is loud. We are driven off our, out of our backyard into the house. And even then, we can hear it watching TV. And I understand that there's noise ordinance that precludes this sort of thing. And there's also a stipulation in their lease that forbids this type of activity. But they've obtained a variance on these, holding these things. They've gotten the permission to do that. And we're concerned about it happening again next summer. We understand the hardship that they have with the COVID problem. We're sympathetic to that. We were patrons. We go there for dinner. My kids golf there. I mean, we have no problems with them. We support them. We want them to survive. All we ask is that they turn things down. If we can hear it on our back porch, then the patrons have to be bleeding out the ears. And there's got to be something that can be done to address that. So that's why I'm here to ask you if there's anything can be done about it, looking ahead to next summer. And I'm not just speaking for myself. I'm speaking for a number of other neighbors who cannot be here tonight. So I'm not sure what, where I should, you know, put this issue and how we move forward. But I'd appreciate any support that you can give us.
We'll look into it and get back to you, sir.
All right.
Please leave your contact information with our clerk.
I've done it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Catherine Camera, 31 Cottage Place, Oakville. I find it interesting that the comments that were just made about these concerts happening, because I was at Planning and Zoning when Hawk Ridge wanted to hold one event for Father's Day in June. It didn't actually happen because of COVID. But they had a public hearing for it, so neighbors were able to address their concerns. I find it really odd that a variance was obtained to have these ongoing concerts at a venue that doesn't normally have that. And yet, these neighbors were never notified about it or given any opportunity to have anything to say about it. So I hope when you look into it, that you find out how that happened and what the difference is between Hawk Ridge and why I can't remember the name of it up at Crestbrook. You know, I don't know what the difference is. The only difference is, I think Eric Markowitz has family that owns that place there. So, you know, just saying. I also know there, too, that their rent went from zero in the very beginning. And to help them out, they're now paying $48,000 a year. So it's quite possible the reason they need to have these concerts is to pay the rent that's increased over the years. And having had this COVID issue, I'm sure it's been, you know, very difficult for them. So if that could be looked at as part of the reason why this summer they needed to do that was to have more revenue to be able to carry them through for their rent, maybe there's a possibility of some type of rent relief that could help out. And those were my comments on that subject. Moving to our new town manager, I noticed on the front page of the paper, he was in a photograph of a gift going to the police department, and it named him as the town manager. I don't know if he's attending these events as the town manager, but he actually hasn't started yet. So I would think that he shouldn't be doing that until he actually starts the job. But that also leads me to my question of, why November 1st? This is somebody who clearly was given the job back in February. So and in June, Tom Lynn said, you know, that they'll start November 1st. There's got to be a reason why this is November 1st when this, he could have started already. But I hear you're not answering questions or you're not participating. So I'm going to leave it to myself to assume that it has something to do with perhaps Mr. Gavala staying in his position until his November 1st, so that he'll turn 75 in November. So maybe that's going to help his pension. Because I can't figure out why we've waited since January to fill that position and why November 1st is so important. I don't know if you're answering questions, but I'm also curious if Mr. Ramo is going to resign from the Housing Authority and from being a marshal for the town. So I don't know how I'll get those answers, but I'll keep looking for them. And I also wanted to say that I noticed the last meeting on the agenda, it looked like you were going to change the assistant town manager position from a very capable Susan Zappone to also a very capable Roy Kavanaugh. However, my question on that is, I hope if you're going to put it back on the agenda, there's going to be a discussion about it so the public can understand why they're doing that. Because it would seem to me that Ms. Zappone's done a perfectly fine job doing it. We're probably paying her for doing that. If you're going to switch it to somebody else, I don't think you're going to take money from Ms. Zappone. So we're going to pay more to Roy Kavanaugh. I also know Roy Kavanaugh was one of the final contenders for the position. And it concerns me that we have somebody who's inexperienced taking the job. And then you're making someone who was also a contender for the job his assistant. And I really have to wonder who's going to really be doing the job. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing none, public participation is closed. We have the minutes.
Make motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 5th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved unanimously. Next on the agenda are my comments. First, I would like to tell you that we had correspondence from the Watertown Commission on Aging expressing the need for a community senior center. They have written to us in the past indicating that need. And we are aware of it, and we are looking forward. When we sit and develop our goals, that certainly will be something that we'll address. We also had an email from Denise Russ relative to the question she had brought up previously regarding the Echo Lake storm drain. Roy is not here, but it is my understanding, and Chief Gavala, correct me if I'm, if I'm in error, but it's my understanding that that storm drain has collapsed for the second time. And that it is not a small repair. It's a repair that's estimated to be at least $90,000. And so that it's something that's being addressed, but it's not something that's going to happen quickly. We have to find the funding for it. And the appropriate corrections have to be engineered or planned out, however they handle that. Last council meeting, we had an inquiry with regard to the email mailbox we set up. So I did want to respond to that. We are not going to set up a lot of rules and regulations and make it a policy and address every one of those questions that was in the, in the, in the response to us or into the inquiry to us. I will tell you, I am the one that receives the emails via the town manager's office. I answer them. And hopefully, if I don't have the knowledge or information I need, I certainly go to the appropriate department head to obtain it. Everyone will get an answer. In some cases, it might be by email. In other cases, it might be a written letter. Any inquiry that comes to us via the email will be read here, so the public will know. We will not read any of that address. How would I say, any personnel issues? Anything that involves the privacy of a citizen or the privacy of an employee. But other than that, everything will be read and will be responded to. And then you will obviously see that in the minutes of the council meeting. So there will be an ongoing record. Just for your information, we did get a copy of a letter that was sent to the Board of Education from the auditors relative to what they consider additional materials, information that they're going to need when they do the Board of Audit and the potential for additional costs. It doesn't affect us as the council, general government side of the budget. But I just felt you should be aware that they are encountering those kinds of issues, too. And tonight is our last meeting before, I should say, until November 16th. We will not be meeting the night before elections. So the next meeting, which would normally be November 2nd, will be canceled. And we will meet at a regular meeting on November 16th. And last but not least, there's been a lot of discussion in town about the questions on the machine. Obviously, the council is hoping that citizens in town will approve those questions. There are some that are very important and make changes to the charter. I personally understand, and I think other council members probably do, too, that there are individuals that wish there was another, there was an additional question on the machine with regard to the form of government. That question isn't there, but we don't want the fact that that's not there to negate all of the hard work that was done and the questions that we do need to answer. But either way, please make sure that you and your families all, all vote on November 3rd. Onto the town manager, if you would, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, we held a bond sale to fund approximately $6 million in road improvement projects. To our surprise and delight, we were able to borrow $6 million for 21 years at 1.5% interest. This is the lowest rate in the state for similar bond issues. Our timing, obviously, was just right. Our two properties, the annex and the town hall, have been placed on the real estate market and have generated considerable interest. To that end, we are putting both parcels of real estate property up for sale by sealed bid. A notice will be published, which will provide any interested parties with the appropriate information to offer a bid. The bid opening is scheduled for Wednesday, November 4th, 2020, at 2:00 p.m. at the Watertown Town Hall, 61 Echo Lake Road in Watertown. Our town clerk has informed me she has received approximately 2,900 applications for mail-in ballots for the upcoming presidential election. With two weeks to go, she anticipates receiving another 500 or so requests. Both the office of the town clerk and the registrar of voters are working diligently to ensure that all applications and ballots are properly processed and counted so that every voter in Watertown can be assured their vote will be counted on Election Day. I'm very pleased to report my office received notification from the Government Finance Officers Association that our finance director, Sue Zappone, has been awarded the prestigious Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting. Its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. In addition to this award, thanks to Sue's leadership and commitment, our bond rating stands at AA+. Thank you, Sue, for your job well done. That concludes my manager's, manager's report, Madam Chair. However, I would like to read a letter into the record tonight. Dear Madam Chair, today marks 51 years, two months, and eight days in my long career with the Watertown Police Department. To say that Watertown has been exceptionally good to me would be an understatement, as evidenced by where I'm sitting tonight. This town council, as well as our police commission, has always supported me and the police department as we navigated through good and, in some cases, challenging times. For that support, I will be eternally grateful. It has been a distinct honor for me to serve as your police chief and your interim town manager. Your trust, support, and confidence in me will never be forgotten. Accordingly, effective December 31st, 2020, I will be concluding my career with the Watertown Police Department and moving on to other endeavors. I want to thank Acting Chief Berniger for the outstanding job he has done during my absence while I served as interim town manager. In conclusion, I want to thank you, and I wish you all the success as you continue to serve the residents of Watertown and Oakville. To our new town manager, Mark Ramo, I am confident he will bring the same enthusiasm, dedication, and commitment he demonstrated as a command officer in our police department in his new role as our chief executive officer. I remain in your service, Chief John Gavala's interim town manager. Let me add also that after being around for 50 years, an additional six months or a year is going to have absolutely no effect on my pension. Thank you. Thank you.
Move on to new business appointments to boards and commissions.
I move to appoint Daniel DeVito, 106 Pine Ridge Drive Extension, Oakville, as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire January 2026, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mark Ramo. So DeVito is an, or was an alternate member and has now been appointed to a regular member.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
I'm going to abstain there, just in case.
Okay. Motion has passed with one abstention.
I move to appoint Daniel S. Gallotti, 235 Williamson Circle, Oakville, as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the vacancy created by Daniel DeVito, who just previously became a regular member for a term to expire January 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining?
I'm going to abstain there.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes with one abstention. Item two.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of $11,551 to cover the additional hours, or additional hours of five hours per week for the fire chief, deputy fire chief.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to note that one of the reasons why they've asked for, and they have asked for it in the past as well, but more specifically now, it's related to this additional time and effort that goes along with, you know, with COVID and
All those responsibilities.
Yeah, additional responsibilities to go with that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a bid waiver for the purchase of an upgrade to the police department phone system from Exicon for an amount not to exceed $14,999.98.
Is there a second?
Second. I'm sorry.
Would you be kind enough to address this for us? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, council members. Joshua Berniger, Acting Chief of Police. The resolution in front of you is for the upgrade for our current 911 telephone recording system. This is the device that is basically a fancy DVR, which will record all incoming phone calls and all radio transmissions. It's a required device for a public safety department to have and as a public safety answering point for the town of Watertown. Our current piece of equipment was purchased in 2012. Its lifespan is six years. We've squeezed an extra two years out of it, begging and pleading for support contracts. The company and manufacturer has been refusing to provide support for the hardware, but did provide support for the software component of it for the last two years. And has informed us that over the next year, they will not even support the software anymore and that we need to upgrade the equipment. Upgrading the equipment is $14,999.98 as opposed to purchasing a brand-new piece of equipment, which is nearly double that cost. So we are respectfully requesting we waive that bid as an upgrade to the existing hardware. Do you have any, or any questions?
For the record, this was already included in the current year budget?
That is correct. It was budgeted at $15,000.
Anyone have any other questions?
I do quick question to the chair. What's the life expectancy for that system?
Just about any technology piece, you're going to get somewhere between six to 10 years before it's going to need to be replaced. And that doesn't mean it's broken. It just means that the manufacturer will no longer support it anymore, and you're on your own. And this is a critical piece of equipment that we can't afford to have break down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
To the chair, I have one other question. Are there other companies that manufacture this, or is this one you found to be most reliable or?
There are other companies that make There are other companies that make these. We got another quote for about 20,000 for a new piece of equipment. So upgrading, and it wasn't really an apples-to-apples quote. It's a lesser device than the one we currently have. We have a very good piece of equipment right now, so upgrading that will, will keep the equipment we have at top notch. The company we purchased from is called Exicon. They're a very good product, well-known in that industry.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $5,680 for police equipment funds received from a donation from Armor Shields Companies.
Second.
Do we have any questions?
I have a question for the chair. Is Armor Shields Company, is this a company that manufactures this equipment or do they just donate the money?
No, that's a very good question. It is simply a, it's a business in Oakville that has nothing to do with making shields. They are a construction company that does home remodeling.
Okay.
So it's a coincidence that the money that they're donating is going to purchasing shields and helmets for the police department.
That's cool.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $8,812 for tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Second.
Second.
Again, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
We have adjourned. Have a nice evening.